Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to April 19, 2016 County Commission Meeting. I would remind you to silence your cellphones. The meeting documents are on the end of the counter in the white folder. And if you need a listening device, Robert is in the front here and he could help you with that. That will move on to routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Move to approve.
Have a motion, a second, to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approve the county commission meeting minutes from 4/12/2016. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second. Is there any amendments? All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of $435,223.37.
Pay the bills.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a second, is there a comment? No comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number four is reports. Item A is register of deeds report for collection, for fees collected in March 2016. Item B is the Minnehaha County Juvenile Detention Center report for March of 2016. And item C is the auditor's account with the county treasurer's office as of March 31, 2016. And those are all on file at the auditor's office. Item number five is personnel actions. Item A is consider a motion to consider routine personnel actions. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second. A motion and a second, any questions from HR? All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number six is applications for abatement, there are none. Item number seven is notices and requests. Item A is a notice from the South Dakota Department of Health for disinterment/reinterment permit issued for the remains of Jonathan Bodie. Item number eight is planning and zoning notices, there are none. Item number nine is petition for compromise of lien, DPNO number 31088, in the amount of $24,074.13. Robert Wilson, good morning, Robert.
Good morning Commissioners, Robert Wilson with the commission office. The commission office has received a compromise lien application from these applicants for two DPNOs. DPNO 31088 in the amount of $24,074.13 and DPNO 24594 in the amount of $648. The applicants are in the process of purchasing a home located at 1304 North 7th Street in Sioux Falls. Purchase price $144,500. These liens were discovered during the review process prior to closing. Closing is scheduled for May 27. The applicants request a compromise and release of both liens in full with no payment. And I will tell you that the applicants had a prepared statement when they came in and talked to me. And at that point, there was a offer to pay the smaller of the two. And then, you know, in my conversations with them, that was, they asked if there was anything wrong with asking to have both liens forgiven. I said that you certainly can ask for that if you want and there's no harm in making the request. And so they may want to address that if they choose to speak with, to you. But I just, that question came to me and I wanted to just clear up any confusion that might have been on that point. DPNO 24594 solely in the name of one of the applicants and assistance was provided between 1990 and 1999 by the Public Defender's Office and Human Services. Between 1994 and 2004, the applicant made small but very consistent payments on this loan. $900 of the total lien incurred has been repaid, leaving the current balance of $648.10. And that is 58% of the original balance has been repaid. DPNO 13088 is in the name of the other applicant and an ex-spouse. Services were provided between 1993 and 2010 between the, by the Human Services Office, as well as small additional amounts of assistance provided by the Public Defender's Office and the Public Advocate's Office. The lien was, this lien was first compromised in full by an action of the commission back in 1995. And that amount was for $4,556.60. Majority of that lien involved medical expenses. Between 1997, 2001, assistance was provided on two occasions by the Public Defender's Office. Following that, that lien was paid in full, resulting in a zero balance in 2001. In 2009 and 2009 and 2010, additional services were provided by Public Advocate, Public Defender and the Human Services Office in the current amount of $24,074.13. Now, the majority of these expenses, over 90%, involved medical assistance provided to the applicant. The applicant and their ex-spouse were married from 1993 until 1999. Now, these applicants report a total 2015 income of just under $80,000. They have two boys and both applicants work full-time. They report assets of approximately $11,000, liabilities in excess of $64,000. As you review this application, there is one thing that I want you to keep in mind, something that's a little bit unique on these. The county did receive catastrophic aid from the catastrophic pool in the amount of $2,512.92. And what this means for you, as you consider this compromise application, is if you require a partial payment as part of a compromise, part of any kind of compromise, the first $2,512.92 the county would receive would be required to repay the pool. So that, the county is not going to be out any money. For example, if you compromised the lien in full with no payment, you do not, the county does not owe the pool. But if, if the compromise includes payment from the applicant, the first $2,512.92 would go to repay the pool. Again, provided a number of documents for your review as you were preparing, as you were reviewing this application, I am available to answer any questions and I believe the applicants are here to answer any questions as well.
Are there any questions for Robert first? I actually have one, Robert. That repayment to the catastrophic pool, if there was any repayment required on the first DPNO that was $648, none of that would go back to the pool because that is a totally separately, not connected with the, not connected with the catastrophic fund. So that is totally separate.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions for Robert?
Commissioner. Yep, so Robert, really, when we're looking at this, it's almost like we've received two different applications because they're from, they're related to debts incurred by two people who are not married at the time that the debts were incurred.
Yes. The reason they're being brought together is the individuals, as they're preparing to purchase their home, they are looking for resolution on two liens. But for your consideration, yes, you're dealing with two items.
And ultimately, when we're at the end of this, we'll make two motions to do whatever. So, the applicant is here. If you would like to speak, you do not have to stand, you do not have to say your name or just ask you to speak very loudly. If you don't want to speak, you don't have to speak, so it's up to you. You don't have to come up here, you can stay right where you are and just talk real loud.
My name is Wade Barnes. I was completely unaware that this was still an ongoing issue. And that is my fault and I accept sole responsibility. I do apologize for having to be here at this level. But had I known that it was still an issue, I would have been addressing it and the situation was occurring.
Okay, thank you.
But any consideration that you do have, I'm very grateful.
Thank you. You don't have to give your name.
I just wanted to say that I was.
It's okay.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
It is really tough to come and speak in front of a group if you're not accustomed to it. In fact, you know, it's easier for us, we get to sit up a little higher and we speak every week. And, you know, for folks that aren't accustomed to it, it's tough. And so, I certainly understand that. And, you know, clearly in these two separate DPNOs, there's long histories where, you know, certainly payments have been made and the amounts have been reduced by other means. At the same time, you know, we are here representing nearly 200,000 people and, you know, tens of millions are owed us by folks who've received assistance from the county one way or the other. And so, we have to be prudent as we, as we address these things. But from my point of view, making regular payments has certainly been a very important part.
Additional comments? Commissioner Kelly?
I guess my, my concern is that we generally look for some participation on the part of the people if they're going to forgive the loan. And I, I think forgiving the entire loan, I would have a problem with that without a, around a 50%. Now, because that was, I believe, a hospital bill, is that correct, or medical?
Yep.
You know, we probably would use a little different standard as far as the percentage of amount paid. But I do believe that there, and even though we have to pay back the catastrophic fund, I think there would be some, and I think we should be somewhere around that 25, 30% on that one.
Commissioner Bender.
I think it's confusing to me to try to address them both at the same time. And so, you know, perhaps we could, we could do it one at a time since we're going to need to make separate motions anyway. You know, frankly, the easier one for me is the DPNO 24594, the smaller one, in the amount of $648.10. That debt had been receiving pretty frequent, pretty regular payment and it has been reduced by 58% at this time. And, you know, so I would make a motion to go ahead and compromise that debt without any further payment.
I have a motion and a second. A motion and a second on DPNO number 24594 to compromise in full the payment of $648.10. Any additional comments on that one? All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Then we're on to the next one, which is DPNO number 31088 in the amount of $24,074.13. Comments?
I would agree that this one is a much more difficult one for me to kind of grasp. Frankly, the fact that we had owed money back to another fund is not really relevant to me. I mean, you know, we got the benefit of that and it's, our agreement is to share those debts with other people. And so, to me, that's not really relevant here. What's more concerning to me is that this, this debt has been longstanding. It's been with somebody who's been a recipient of benefits for a long period of time over, over the years. And there's not, it doesn't appear to me that there's been a, any kind of real repayment schedule, even though there's been some means to go ahead and repay that. And so, I think I would probably be more in line with Commissioner Kelly on this one, that I would, I would be looking for, you know, 25 to 30% payment on this debt in order to compromise it.
Additional comments?
I, I want to make a comment. Kind of weighing in on a different side on this one. These were hospital bills. Anything that was public defenders, public advocate was paid, all except for one. I think there's an $80 public advocate bill that was not paid. Those payments were made with partial payments or full payments on all of those services. And so, what we're covering here would just be the medical part of it. We realize it's a lot, but within a few years, that will start to be paid off as property tax as they start paying on a house. And so, if we get any money back on that part of this particular lien, it's going to go back to the catastrophic health fund. It's not going to do anything for the county. We already pay the catastrophic health fund every year just to be members of that. Carol, do you know offhand, that's kind of putting you on the spot, how much we pay for, but we pay more to them than we ever receive back?
This year, we actually came out a little bit ahead, but the previous years prior to that, we have not.
We've paid them a lot more than we've ever reaped in benefits, so.
Commissioner Hiberger, I mean, Carol, isn't it true that, I mean, long-term, if we averaged it over the whole entire participation, that, I mean, for a while, we were actually doing quite well under it, then we had a few years where we did not do well. I mean, it's insurance, basically, is what we're doing, you're sharing risk, which is what, what happens. Sometimes you do well and sometimes you don't.
Commissioner Kelly.
I'd like to make a motion to, which one, are we talking 31088 now?
Yep, yep.
To release that lien and payment of $6,000.
I have a motion for $6,000, is there a second? Is there a second?
I would second that.
I have a motion and a second for $6,000. Additional comments? Commissioner Barth?
I'm not sure what the right number is, but I think that's too high for me. So, I'm not feeling support for it at this moment.
Additional comments? You ready for a vote? We better do a roll call. Robert, did you want to say something else? Yep, yep.
I did file for an A-approving statement and I don't recall ever discussing it in depth with my lawyer about the county issue remaining. Under an assumption which was wrong in me, I thought that it was going to be taken care of and being resolved. So I went forth in life thinking that, okay, I can start over because I had left my appointment with the state and I didn't have insurance when this all took place. And I, frankly, I needed the help and I'm very grateful that you were there. At that point, you know, I guess the only other thing I really have to say is that the underwriters are at a point where this is a deal breaker and I don't know if there's a way to make a payment with a lien removed. I'd be willing to work anything out, but with the way it sits, as long as there is a lien, there is no sale on the house. And it's just completely done. And, you know, we've been good faith on a lot of things and spent money to try to, you know, make this purchase happen, own inspection and everything else. And I'd be willing, I mean, I don't know what the options are, but I'd be more than willing to make payments if I could have a lien removed on whatever you all thought was sufficient or what I needed to pay back. I am willing to absolutely, I've got a very good job now and things are, would spiral for us and, you know, whatever you guys think, I'd be more than willing to work with you if we could get that lien removed.
Yes, okay, thank you. Unfortunately, I think the $6,000 is going to stick them out of the house. So, we do have a motion and a second for a repayment of $6,000 on this. I think we better do a roll call vote. Commissioner Barth?
No.
Bender?
Yes.
I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Benega?
No.
Kelly?
Yes.
Hiberger? No. Motion fails, three to two. Is there additional motion or additional conversation?
Madam Chair, I fully understand the applicant's concern there. And, you know, many of these bills are due to medical. I mean, the huge, the vast majority. It has been paid off back in, or compromised in full back in, let's see here, in 2010, or 2001, I'm sorry. And I think that I'm going to make a motion to compromise this lien in full for $1,000.
I have a motion for $1,000, is there a second? Is there a second? Commissioner Benega, will you make a motion for me?
Sure.
Okay, I have a motion and a second for $1,000. Additional comments?
Madam Chair, I guess I would urge my colleagues to support this in as much as, you know, there's, there's not much blood in the rock here. And moving forward, you know, is, I guess, God's gift to all of us that, you know, we go forward from where we are today. And I just would advocate a vote in favor.
I'd like to make a substitute motion.
A substitute motion?
Substitute motion is to grant the, to release a lien in full.
I have a substitute motion to release a lien in full, is there a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to substitute, to release in full.
My reason being, I do it reluctantly, but this money will go back to the pool and I, I'm sure they're struggling no matter what. So, I'll just wish them luck in the future and hope that they can get everything under control.
I have a motion and a second for a substitute motion to release in full. Do I need a roll call on that one? I guess you roll call. Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Hiberger? Yes. Substitute motion passes to release in full. Now a motion on the amended motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. You have been released and you can talk to Robert, he will help you with that. Yep. This is the opportunity for public comment. If you would like to speak about something that is not on the agenda, this is the time that you would do that. Good morning, Bruce.
Good morning, it's been a while since I've been here. Bruce Daniels from Sioux Falls. I have a little prepared statement I wanted to read. Kelo TV had a great title to last week's Wednesday story they broadcast, "Looking Back at Election Night Issues." My question still is, 2014 or 2016? This body appointed seven South Dakota citizens to study the problems surrounding the operation of the county ballot tabulating processes. I was fortunate enough to be selected to be chairman of this Minnehaha County Election Review Committee. Our committee used experience of our members and the witnesses to study many aspects of the election processes. As a voting process and rights advocate, I walked into the ballot processing room Tuesday evening and was, and it was 2014 all over again. Almost all the recommendations we had made for the processing of ballots had been thrown away. The county did spend $125,000 or so on a new DS 850 tabulator, but everything else was back to the way it had been before our committee's work started. To say I was disappointed would be an understatement. Moments after I arrived to watch the process, county auditor Bob Litz pulled me aside. For the first time ever, he asked me to stay back from the evening's events and I did. The Minnehaha County Auditor's Office was acting as a contractor performing the counting process function for the Sioux Falls City Clerk. It was the clerk's design and process. I sat back and watched several events that night and a couple of them really stood out to me. I watched the poll books get loaded into a city trailer instead of being placed in the auditor's office. A problem with the tabulator count versus poll books needed to be answered. A delay developed as the books had to be unloaded from the trailer. I know this seems minor, but the poll books are our election history. Those poll books need to be scanned immediately following the election so that we know who voted and we can verify the counts. These belong in the auditor's care until the official process is done. It slowed down the counting while the search was on. We've watched absentee ballot issues return and there were more things. But it made me think of last year and the care that Bob Litz and the school district's Bev Chase used to run the election. It was almost perfect. Do you remember any problems last year for the substantially larger ballot count in the 2015 election? There weren't any. The counting was completed hours earlier because the recommendations of our committee were followed. A story quote states, "Greco didn't read the entire report from the Election Review Committee set up in 2014. He believes they incorporated its findings as best they could into this election." Must have missed the homework assignment because there's a final report and over 13 hours of video to study, plus members of this committee volunteering to help. Once again, the failures of 2014 led to the successes of 2015. I do not blame the auditor's office for the failures of last Tuesday. I'm not here to protect anyone or any office. I'm here to encourage Minnehaha County Auditor's Office to document best practices based on the successes of the 2015 school election and our committee's reports. Use these best practices to operate all future election tabulating. We only have four elections every two-year cycle. It is too easy to forget the minor details, so every time an election is held, successes and failures must be documented. Memories are too short, processes must be documented and then followed. And thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. So, anyone else that has anything they'd like to add at public comment? Seeing none, we will move on to regular business. Item number 10 is authorize the chairman to sign professional services agreement with JSA Engineering and Land Surveyors in the amount of $225,098 for construction administration services for Project MC 149 reconstruction, reconstruct, reconstruction of Minnehaha County Highway 149 from South Dakota 38 to Minnehaha Highway 122. Good morning, DJ.
Good morning Commissioners, DJ Booth, the highway superintendent. This agreement today is for construction administration on the reconstruction project that should be starting up very soon. They have a pre-construction meeting starting in about 10 minutes, I think. And JSA completed the design for the project. And Boaz Construction out of Brookings is the contractor. So, this agreement has to go before you because of its dollar amount and it does not fall within that new purchasing policy update that would allow the highway superintendent to sign the agreement. So, it does have to be approved by the county commission and I'm asking for your approval today.
Any questions? Commissioner Barth?
DJ, the $225,000, that seems like a lot of money. I don't recall seeing projects, the consulting on these projects be that large often, anyway.
This is a pretty expensive reconstruction project, so it's a lot bigger project than we've ever had since I've been here, I believe. The Baltic Bridge was the other real big one. And so, it's very much in line with, with what we would expect to pay a consultant to do construction administration. And we did vet through their proposal and adjust some hours as we felt was necessary. And so, it has been negotiated. It's not being presented to you as it was originally presented to us.
Make a motion to authorize the chair to sign this contract.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number 11 is authorize the chair to sign professional services agreement with Stockwell Engineers Incorporated for design services in the amount of $297,175 for reconstruction design of Minnehaha County Highway 137 from Minnehaha County 122 to Minnehaha County 110. I read it all.
Well, if you thought the last one was.
Yeah, that's what I was just thinking.
I'm going the same way.
Well, this project is something that we were looking at doing, designing in 2017 and construction starting in 2018. And because of the favorable bids that we had on the 149 reconstruction project and, and some other budgetary type things with extra revenues coming in from the Senate, Senate Bill 1 last year, we were able to change our budget and move this for reconstruction starting in 2017. And so, we would like to start designing in 2016 using funds that we saved from the 149 bid opening. And so, we've negotiated with Stockwell Engineers to perform the design services for this project and negotiated a contract, hourly not to exceed contract, of $297,175. And would like to get going again on this unbudgeted item in 2016. And so, we can move to construction in 2017.
Questions? Commissioner Bender?
DJ, your memo talks about that this has been designated as a biker-friendly segment of the road. Can you explain how that process works? of the road, can you explain how that process works and what that really means in design?
What we end up with is basically a larger, a wider section roadway and so we will account for a larger paved shoulder that bikers can travel on and have a multimodal road section. And so the way that we have this designated as one of those routes is we meet with a lot of different groups around the county, including CCOG, even though I don't believe this section of roadway is within the MPO boundary. But there are several stakeholders that have been identified that we meet with and have identified a bike route that leaves the Sioux Falls area on the east side of town, goes up Highway one twenty-one, past Yogi Bear Campground and up to our Booker Prairie Park and then over west to one thirty-seven and then from one thirty, on one thirty-seven we come back down south to Sioux Falls. That route generally has been designated as our biker-friendly route and so when we perform reconstructions along that road section, we try to do that wider roadway to account or accommodate for bicycles to more safely travel down the roadway.
Okay, thanks. Additional comments or questions? Is there a motion?
It's all moved.
Is there a second? A question or was that a second?
I have a question. DJ, can you remind us what the additional cost that you projected the biker route to be for the construction piece by widening the road and now obviously with the fees that are being allocated to that?
On this specific roadway?
Yes.
Okay, on this specific roadway, I don't remember right off the top of my head how much that additional cost is, but if I, if I remember correctly, we're looking at something like eighty thousand dollars per mile, per side. And so a hundred and sixty thousand dollars per mile to make a road go from a standard roadway on a reconstruction project to a biker-friendly roadway.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Barth?
You know, I really believe that going forward, that biker-friendly trails are going to help with tourism in our community and the idea that people would come here and fight against the wind to go this way or that and maybe have lunch in Dell Rapids or in Crooks or Hartford or Garrettson, whatever, I think going forward, it's something that will pay off for us. I do worry that we're spending all the money from Senate Bill Two on engineers though and not enough on asphalt, but it's...
Commissioner Bender?
Just to kind of, I get a lot of questions about biker-friendly roads and the people that are, that use those, use them very faithfully and, you know, obviously I think while engineering costs are hard to swallow sometimes, at the same time, you know, given the number of biker deaths and biker injuries that we've experienced over the last couple of years, I think it's really important that it be studied carefully and that a professional design it so that we can maximize the ability of the bikes and the cars to share the roadway to the much, to the extent we can.
And I would say living on a non-biker-friendly highway, it is scary to ride and I ride on a very, and I didn't ride last year because there are so many semis on my road, it's not safe anymore to ride on that non-biker-friendly road, so my bike is parked. So I have a motion, but I don't have a second. You did second, okay. I have a motion and a second to authorize the chairman to sign.
Madam Chair, thank you.
Did you have a comment?
Question, yeah, that's all right. My question, it's not about the public safety or the additional costs, I was trying to get to a point where we would have some definition of how we're going to designate roads in the future that are going to be quote, "biker-friendly" and are not going to be biker-friendly.
That's an interesting question because we, as highway department employees, we don't necessarily advocate for the biking community, but we work with them as a stakeholder because we are owners of the roadway. So we're not advocating to have a biker-friendly route on every single road, but we definitely acknowledge that there are a lot of biking, there's a big biking community especially in this part of the state that do need biker-friendly routes and so, as I said, we're not advocates, but we acknowledge that they're there and so we need to accommodate them. And so there is a large movement across the United States and it's driven by FHWA that we have multimodal routes, roads are not necessarily just for cars anymore, they're for cars, they're for bikes, they're for motorcyclists, we have to acknowledge that as well when we're doing different improvements to the roadway. And so while we acknowledge that, we try to spend the taxpayer dollars in the best way that is possible and sometimes that means that we don't make certain routes biker-friendly if they're not connecting points between different population bases, maybe they're not the best places to have a biker-friendly route. And so that biker-friendly route is something that's studied on a fairly regular basis, I think every five years officially is when we're supposed to relook at that and study it and designate that route. I don't see that route getting any smaller anytime soon, probably getting bigger as people become more green-friendly and want to ride bikes more often, so I think that the MPO is planning on, or CCOG is planning on re-studying the biker-friendly route within the MPO next year and so we'll probably do our study along that same timeframe too.
That's kind of where I was going to go with this is because the, I'm on the CCOG board and I know that that's a challenge or objective for next year and I think that we need to be part of that because if I remember right, the biker-friendly amendment to this contract was kind of added after we had the original proposal based on an input of that group, if you will, and I'm hoping that we have a definite plan or definite restrictions or whatever you want to call it in how we're going to address that in the future rather than maybe doing it as an afterthought, but having some qualifications to make sure that we're meeting those before we change the cost.
Right, and Commissioner, I'm sorry, I just picked up on a little bit of confusion you might have had. The last agenda item on the commission meeting was for Highway one forty-nine, the highway on Hartford, and that's where we had the amendment to add the bike lane.
Okay, I'm confused too then.
I'm sorry. This agenda item is for Highway one thirty-seven.
Oh, sorry.
And so this is a new reconstruction project that is on a biker-friendly identified route and so we're going into it knowing that we're going to be adding the bike lane.
I was confused, sorry.
Sorry about that.
Nope, not your fault.
Commissioner Kelly?
I think if we look back years ago when the whole river, river bike trails were developed, there was probably a lot of resistance at that time to the amount of money the city has spent on it. I think the result has been extremely important to the community and I, although I don't bike very often anymore, I, even when I was doing it a few years ago, there were tons of people on it and I imagine it's even more. So it's kind of a leap of faith, I think when we use this process going into, especially now because we're going to be going through a reconstruction process on our county roads and I, even though it's a lot of money, I think it's a leap of faith to make this county better and I fully support it.
Motion and a second, are, is there any other comments or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the last one, item number twelve is authorize the chairman to sign amendment number one to the contract for clinically managed detoxification services between Minnehaha County and the South Dakota Department of Social Services Division of Behavioral Health. Carol Muller, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, Carol Muller, Commissioned Administrative Officer. Yes, in front of you is the yearly readjustment to the detox contract from the state of South Dakota. Each year, the end of May, usually the beginning of June, you get an annual contract regarding reimbursement that the state of South Dakota will make for our detox services and these are for people who meet those qualifications and in those guidelines. As you know, a few years ago, we changed that over, the incorporation of the sobering center, we did what we called some right sizing to this particular process and as the point of that, we've seen our reimbursement numbers change over the years. The original contract was for a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, since we've made that change, it typically is right around that sixty thousand dollars. Even though we say we'll probably spend about sixty, we get a hundred and thirty-four in a contract. But this is just the change so that it frees the money up so they can go to other organizations that do drug and alcohol treatment and allow those dollars to be used for them yet this year, which is a good thing because we do refer people on to different organizations and agencies that do those treatment also. So with that, would ask for your support in approving the commission chair to sign this amendment.
Any questions for Carol? Jean?
So Carol, next year when we sign a contract, it will likely be the high number again?
Possibly, they put a number in there even though we know we probably do around the sixty thousand.
And then when we budget, do we budget at the sixty thousand level or do we budget at the higher level? How does, how do we budget the income?
You know what, I am not able to pull that right off the top of my head that's out of there, so, but I do know that the auditor's office is very good at looking at what actual numbers have been for past few years.
Additional questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Move to accept.
A second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number thirteen is liaison reports, are there any liaison reports? I think, Commissioner Barth?
Yeah, I asked Scott Anderson to report on some developments in his department.
Okay, good morning, Scott.
Good morning, Scott Anderson, County Planning. I just wanted to give you a quick update on some information that we've received and share it with you and it involves our aerial photography and so let me hand this out to you.
We have a copy.
We have copies, yep.
Okay, great. This was discussed at our last quarterly GIS meeting. Recently, we have been informed and found out that the city is moving ahead with their own RFP for aerial photography and in the past, we've tried to sort of work together and there has been some cost savings, but the city is now focusing on getting, acquiring information on impervious and pervious services within the city that they will use for primarily stormwater drainage issues and they also indicated that they don't really use the pictometry, the oblique imagery that equalization finds very invaluable. And thirdly, they have indicated that they, they really prefer, the city really prefers a later flyover date in May or June, which doesn't really fit into the needs of equalization. They want to be able to see structures with leaf off, with no leaves, it helps them to better evaluate structures and what's out there. So that being said, it is, there is a significant increase in what we typically would see for budgeting for aerial photography with pictometry. I've included that information to you, I'm letting you know that this is coming forth because it will be a budget item, it will be implemented into my budget for next year and because they would typically, we would do the flyover in spring of 2017 and we would get the imagery in late summer, early fall of that year after they have it processed. I have been working, I will let you know, I have been working with CCOG and the MPO with Amber and I have provided her this information and we are trying to get it into the MPO budget. Amber informed me that there may be a hurdle with getting this into the MPO budget as the state, state DOT or, and federal highway really want to see one project with all the entities in the MPO. So if Sioux Falls is, if the city of Sioux Falls is going in their own direction, that may not fit the criteria that the MPO wants to see. That's what Amber has informed me, but we are still working, trying to get this, some of this paid for with MPO funding. So this is basically an informational item, I'd be glad to answer any questions and Heidi Yurkey is here from, she's our GS coordinator, if you have any other questions that are really, really detailed, I'll bring Heidi up, but I'd be glad to answer any questions and I'm just wanting to get this on your radar.
Questions? Commissioner Kelly?
This is really unfortunate. I was at the, at the meeting the other day and if I remember correctly, the city kind of sprung this on us just, just recently. We make all these efforts to do joint ventures and to cooperate and the city seems to have an attitude of it's my way or no way. They want to do their, they want to do the spring, the late spring flyover, which is of no value to our equalization department who's probably one of the bigger users of this. And, you know, there's always, when you have a contract with various parties, you've always got issues here and here and most people, I think, try to work them out. Why the city is insisted on this one is beyond me. It would be really unfortunate to have two different purveyors on this thing, it's kind of silly to fly it twice. It's an engineering deal, basically, from what I've seen. The engineering department wants to be able to check depth of sewers or something, I'm not sure, but, you know, on the other hand, we need to have the, the various, what do you call it, slips me, the, the...
The obliques.
Reviews.
The obliques.
And to, so that, I'm sure that probably when, when equalization goes over that, this thing pays for itself just in projects that we didn't know about, but they have to be able to look at the building and they have to be able to see additions. They've had a couple of examples, if I remember correctly, of a building that would have, would not have worked with a heavy foliage cover, but that, that had an addition to the building that you never would have seen otherwise and they had no record of that addition. So I, I think it's unfortunate, I wish the city would work with us on this thing. If this is strictly an engineering deal, I think there's also some political ramifications on it and what's best for the people, so.
Commissioner Bender?
I concur with Scott, it's just, it's too bad it happened and we know the city's going to probably win their case anyway, but I think it's too bad.
Commissioner Bender?
Well, I'm just curious about what the, why it matters to the city timing-wise, I mean, is it because they want the foliage or because there's some other timing issue that's driving it on their part?
That was discussed at our quarterly GIS meeting last week and as I understand it, the city feels that their users, whoever those are, prefer imagery that has more green in it.
Looks pretty. Wasn't that the word?
Looks prettier.
Looks pretty.
That looks pretty, so they want to be able to see imagery that has more greenage in it, like the grass and not, as I understood it, not heavily leafed trees, but trees that have some leaves on them. So that's sort of my understanding and I just wanted to make sure, because this has come up now about oblique imagery and in oblique, what we're, when we say oblique, that basically is taking a picture at an angle so you can be able to see structures instead of directly overhead and all you're going to be able to see is just a roof outline. And that is really invaluable primarily to equalization because they can use that, this has been certified by the state as being a tool that they can use for assessing and so it's, it's doing their assessment, so it is valuable and equalization made it very clear at our quarterly meeting last week that there are, there's somewhere between every year, one thousand and fifteen hundred new structures, buildings that are built in the entire county and we typically do a flyover every three years, so you can see that within a period of three years, you could have five to six thousand new structures that, that this could be a great, well, it is a great tool for them and so I think it's just important that we keep our, and we really need to see this as an asset and we want to keep our asset fresh and usable, so that's why we, that's why there's a need for new imagery and I just want to sort of explain that for the public as well so they can understand what we're spending potentially three hundred thousand dollars of taxpayer money on to, and how that's a benefit. That, that information is also on our website, so the public has the ability to use it too, so there's a great benefit, but I just wanted to make sure that you're not surprised in three or four months when, or two months when we're, you know, in the depths of our budgeting that it's like, wow, where'd this come out of? And so it might be something that, you know, that you want to know about and, you know, at a more, at a higher political level, if you wish to do anything else with discussing this with the city, this, you know, I wanted to give you some, some basic information that you could start using.
Additional comments, questions? Commissioner?
Follow-up on that because it is, and it's a little difficult for a department head to be discussing the political ramifications, but this looked pretty and I forgot that, but I think that was the term used in the meeting, you know, they want it to look pretty. They want to show it to developers and say, here's our beautiful town. Well, three hundred thousand dollars is a very functional item too, we wouldn't be doing it just for pictures. And I think there was, do they want to fly every two years and we wanted to fly three? There was, there was some...
I believe Lincoln County is doing a two-year program. So Lincoln County is also doing their flyover in 2017, but they've already signed a contract with pictometry to do another flyover in 2019. So they're also sort of on their own schedule as well.
But I, I would hope maybe that our leadership could discuss with, with the administration as to why these things are going and why we can't. The city is pretty far along in this thing. I don't know if they got the RFP yet or not, but, but it is a rather, once they make their move, they've made their move. And I do think that maybe it would, would be who of both interests and maybe Lincoln County a little bit to be on the same page.
Additional comments?
Scott, I remember when we brought pictometry because when I came on the commission, we didn't have pictometry.
That's correct.
It was a huge expense and we, you know, we went through the whole thing, is this, is this a good thing for the county to do and where can we use its services? And eventually partnered with, with the city and that was, because I think they were doing it even before we were. And can you, can you speak to what the cost savings was or where, what we stand to lose if we don't do this together, or I should say what the taxpayers stand to lose? Because if we're doing it twice, they're paying for it on the city side and then they're paying for it again on the county side.
Yeah.
And we also might lose a CCOG grant that we were getting because we were doing it together. So what kind of costs could we look at that we could possibly be paying double now?
Well, I, I, from a marketing or from a business perspective, we've been told by pictometry that the, that there, there isn't a lot of cost savings with the flyover schedule. I think where we potentially will, could save money or where, where there's some cost savings with a joint project is when it comes with to discussing that MPO funding. I think that when we have a joint project, then the state and the federal highway, federal highway department is more likely to be able to reimburse some of that. I did ask specifically at the quarterly GIS meeting last week and the city is not going to be requesting this as part of that MPO funding. So, and I, I don't know why they're, why they're not doing that because federal highway department and that MPO funding would pay 80% of that project.
So what did, what did we budget for it last year? And, because we know what you're looking at, we might budget next year.
Last year, we budgeted approximately, I think it was about $55,000. We had, we had a $160,000 contract and we entered into an agreement, we would pay basically a third, a third, a third every year. So it was about 55,000. So that's what we had budgeted. And if you look at the figure that I provided to you, it's.
It's basically in a double.
It's more than doubled.
Yeah.
And some of that is the, you can read through it, there's some details in there about difference, what do they call that? Change finder. That was something that equalization really feels is valuable and so that information's on there and that's something that we can be, that we will be discussing at the budget hearings because they're going to need to make you aware of how important that is and that's a tool that they, that they can use.
Commissioner Bender.
So Scott, you have down, I'm, I'm a little bit confused about this because you have down there as part of the cost, the additional cost estimate for Sioux Falls, is that some, for the oblique imagery?
Yes.
Is that something that we would have to pay part of?
Yes. The city does not want oblique imagery. They don't feel it's useful and they don't, it's not, it's not going to be in their RFP that they are preparing right now.
Okay. Okay. Additional questions? Commissioner Burr.
Just want to comment, I guess, that this is going to cost taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars more in order to have pretty trees in the picture. I mean, we could post photos of Amazonian jungle and they'd be really happy, I'm sure. But the fact is that instead of talking to us, they just announce it to us. Instead of talking to us about the, the building, they just announce us that they're building a building for us. And, you know, in this particular case, we are collecting taxes for them as well based on, on our observations of structures within the city of Sioux Falls. You know, how about if they assess all their own buildings and, and we don't have to do any of that? Well, it's, it's just another example of cooperation from their side and, and just bewildering random acts on, on our side. It's, they think they're doing us a favor, I guess. I do understand that they might want to know where all the pavement, all the roofs, all the parking lots, all the sidewalks are and figure out where the water is going to run and all that stuff. But if, if that's the case, you know, there's certainly been no discussion until last week with us and, you know, I, it doesn't make me happy.
Additional comments?
I did already talk to someone on the city council about this and we have another city council member in our audience today taking notes, so hopefully we will get some action somewhere. So thank you, Scott, for updating us.
Okay. Now I have one more item to discuss. And it's a, it's a completely different item and that is our MS4 program. Last week, I, we had, the, the state has recently hired a new MS4 coordinator and last week.
Want to define that.
Okay, MS4 is separate stor, step, separate storm sewer systems.
Okay.
And so, MS4 is basically runoff from impervious surfaces like roofs, parking lots, sidewalks. And the EPA has mandated, based on the 2010 census, that certain parts of Minnehaha County now are obligated to follow this MS4 program. And you may recall for the public that this is something that we were informed of two years ago, that we would need to start complying and we would need to come up with what's called an MS4 program, which would be how we, how, how the county regulates runoff from new development that is in a specific jurisdiction or a specific defined area as indicated by EPA. So I know this is very complicated, but there were, based on the 2010 census, there were five communities that were added to this entire MS4 program and those were Dakota Dunes, Harrisburg, Lincoln County and Minnehaha County. And there might, I think there was one other one, but anyway, so last week, they, the, we met with all, all of the new communities, met with the new coordinator and we all, we met in Lincoln County down in Canton. And what I wanted to inform you was that EPA was sued based on their waters of the clean waters of the state or clean waters issue. And they have had to completely revamp the, this MS4 system, the program. So two years ago, we were told that we had five years to implement this program. That has all been now basically pushed back and we have been told, the state informed us last week, that EPA is completely rewriting this MS4 program and they are going to have their new guidelines out by, they have to have them out by court order by November 17th. So at that time, it goes to the state first. So EPA will be providing the new criteria for how they are going to adopt letters of intent for new MS4 programs. The state will have another year after that to basically tell the local programs what they will be obligated to do. So I just wanted to give you a quick briefing that while it was my intent to work on this MS4 program this year and really get it started getting implemented, at this point, it, it, there's no work to be done because we have to wait until at least November 17th to see what EPA, what, what guidance they are going to give the state on how these new systems are to be adopted. Because the lawsuit really dealt with public participation of how these, how these letters of intent were being issued and there wasn't enough public participation. So I think there'll, there will definitely be some major revisions to how EPA and the state are going to be looking at these MS4 systems. So I just wanted to give you a little update on that and the public because we have been, this has been discussed and I just wanted to let you know. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Commissioner Bennigan.
Scott, so what you're basically saying is that the person that sued the EPA is talking more about the process rather than the results of the process?
Correct.
Who sued them?
That, I, you know, they never really indicated, I don't know if it was a group of people or, or what, but they were, they were tied up in a lawsuit and it was decided that they needed to rewrite their, their standards and requirements for letters of intent by local communities.
Should find out and we can send them a thank you note.
I can find, I'll call, I can find from the, from the state, but it, I just wanted to let you know this is.
Sounds an awful lot like Waters of the U.S.
It is a little bit, it is tied up into that as well.
Two, I think two years ago when you brought it to us, it sounded kind of daunting and kind of like a crazy idea and so I am glad that it's gotten pushed down the road and maybe it will make a little more sense when they've gotten it rewritten.
That's correct. And we, let's hope and we will find out sometime this year.
Okay.
So Scott, the takeaway for the public is nothing we can do right now.
That's correct. And it's basically status quo. This really impacts development and developers and, you know, like I indicated, there are specific defined areas basically surrounding Sioux Falls that have been identified as having now to meet this stormwater basically retention. And now that's all on hold. So while there has been some interest and there's always development activity that occurs out in the county, I just, it's important for our developers and our citizens to know that at this point, the county is not going to be moving ahead with MS4 program at the speed which we thought we were going to two years ago. It's probably going to be another three to four years before this is actually implemented.
Okay. Additional questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
I just would comment that Scott has been going to East Dakota Water District to meetings for me also and, for example, the next one is this Thursday in Dell Rapids. I would love to have gone, but we're having equalization hearings that morning. So anyway, he's been doing that on my behalf as well.
Thank you, Scott. Any more liaison reports? I would just say I met with the fairground, some fairground people this last week and the hail damage repair is underway and looking very good and that they said that they had, I haven't seen a report, but that the audit has been completed and it went very smoothly and I'm assuming I'll see a report before long. Is there any new business?
Ma'am Chair.
Commissioner Burr.
You know, it was in the news recently that the 300 building kitty corner from us here was suggested as an alternative to the city for the administration expansion that they want to do. And I think at our next building committee meeting, we ought to consider looking at whether that would be the kind of investment we should make for the future and I just wanted to mention that.
Okay, thank you. Any other new business? Any old business?
I would just bring up, we have equalization on Thursday, which Jeff said, and hopefully we have a quorum.
Who's not going to be here?
Commissioner Bennigan is not going to be here. Is everyone else going to be here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we have enough to go forward with that. And what time do we want to be here? So we have that set because I, are we going to be here at 5:00 to 9:00 or do we need to be here earlier than that?
Seven o'clock.
Yeah. Well, last week it was three, it was 8:30. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
I would have spent just 10 minutes, too.
Okay. So if you're over here about 10 minutes or quarter to nine, that will be good. Okay? Any other old business?
I would look for a motion for executive section for contract negotiations and personnel.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned.
We've decided not to incarcerate.